I'd like to call the meeting of the North Hurrock Planning Commission to order, please. Mr. Shawn Spencer is in a conference out of town, so Mr. Tim Rivas will be sitting in for him today, representing the Planning Commission staff. Would you please call the roll?
Alexander Banks.
Here.
Blassco, Chambers.
Present.
Dietz.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Phillip.
Here.
White.
Here.
Chairman Clifton.
Here. Your motion.
Motion to excuse those absent.
Make a motion made and seconded that we excuse those commissioners absent. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let me remind you to please turn off your cell phones, and our Planning Commission procedures are on the back of the agenda, if you wanted to pick one up. And please let me remind the commissioners to speak into the microphone. We have been furnished a activity sheet of what the commission voted on last month, and we had two items that was taken under consideration by the City Council. Both of them were approved. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes of our previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections? Motion made to be seconded, approved as submitted. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move right into our Development Review Committee. Mr. Don Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Development Review Committee met, considered item SD 2017-20 Pershing Motel Edition Lot 1B, Site Plan Review and Replat of a Restaurant Located at the Northwest Corner of West Pershing and JFK Boulevard. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 11 and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that this item be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments made, commissioners? You have a comment?
No, sir.
Representing, okay. On the application as submitted, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item B is SD 2017... Yes, sir. Item B is SD 2017-21 North Shore Business Park Lot 8, Block 8, Site Plan Review and Replat of an Industrial Lot Located at 5,000 North Shore Lane. Items, the applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 10 and subsections. I have a question of staff before we go farther on this item. Tim, is this Powers of Arkansas?
I don't know.
You don't know?
The Powers of Arkansas, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. The applicant agreed to items 1 through 10 and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
And let the record show, if this is Powers of Arkansas, I abstain.
Motion made and seconded that this be approved as submitted. Anyone in the audience with any comments? Any comments made, the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Please let the record show that Mr. Chambers did abstain if it was Powers of Arkansas.
Item C is SD 2017-22 RJ Yelnitch Edition Lot 1, Preliminary Plat and Site Plan Review of a Cell Tower Located at 8113 Count's Massey Road. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 13 and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that be approved as submitted. So anyone in the audience have any comments on this application? Any comments from the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. White?
I need the record to show that I abstained on that vote.
Please let the record show that Mr. White abstained on that vote.
Item D is SD 2017-23 Spring Hill Development Lot 3, Block 5, Site Plan Review, a Commercial Lot Located at 4124 East McCain Boulevard. The applicant was present, agreed to items 1 through 10 and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that it be approved as submitted. Anyone in the audience with any comments on this application? Any comments from the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item E is SD 2017-24 Love's Country Store Edition Lot 1R, Replat and Site Plan Review for Truck Parking Located at 11801 Interstate 40. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 12 and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that this application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Any comments made, the commissioners? On the application, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
SD 2017-25 North Agenda Edition Lot A, Block 45, Replat and Site Plan Review of Commercial Property Located at Northwest Corner of Main and 13th Street, Phases 1 and 2. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 16 and subsections... 19? 19 and subset... I was thumbing through it as quick as I could. 1 through 19 and subsections, with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that this application be approved as submitted. Any comments made, one in the audience? Any comments made, the commissioners, on this application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And item G is SD 2017-28 Rearview Business Park Lot 7, Preliminary Plat and Site Plan Review of a Business Located at 6815 DeWoffel Baker Lane. The applicant's agent was present, and he agreed to items 1 through 12 and subsections with an amendment 2, item 7A, and that one reads, "Provide automatic underground irrigation to all required trees and shrubs, or allow manual irrigation to native species." And the applicant agreed to that, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
7B, wouldn't it?
Yes, 7B.
Okay. Any comments from anyone in the commissioner, or in the audience, on this application? Any comments made, the commissioners? On the application as amended, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That concludes the Development Review Committee report.
Oh, you have item G.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dietz?
Please show that I didn't vote on that.
I will.
Item G was DeWoffel Baker Lane. We just covered it.
Let the record show that Mr. Dietz abstained from the vote on item G on our agenda. Okay, thank you. We'll move into our public hearing. Item number 1 is a conditional use, number 2017-3, to allow an ice machine in a C4 Zone located at 5,500 MacArthur Drive. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. You came before the Development Review Committee. Are you familiar with the conditions that were considered at the meeting?
Yes, I am.
Are you in agreement with all of those?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any questions from any commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Thank you. Give it to Mr. Spencer or Mr. Rivas, and he can tell you what to do next. Our next item is Special Use Case Number 2017-8, to allow a Car Sales Lot in a C3 Zone Located at 1201 Parkway Drive in North Hurrock. You're the applicant?
Yes.
Please give us your name for the record.
Terrell Sanders.
Okay. You were at the Design Review Committee meeting?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the conditions that were considered at the meeting?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with all these?
Yes.
Okay. Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this application? Any comments made, the commissioners? Mr. Tim? No, ma'am. You don't need to unless you want to.
He's a good man.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Foster?
I thought in our Development Committee meeting, we had talked about hours of operation, and... Am I missing it?
Yeah, it's item 1.
Item number 1, 8 to 8.
Oh, okay. It's up there in the heading. Got you. Just want to make sure.
Okay.
You didn't see it. Okay.
Any other comments on the application? Please call the roll.
Banks.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Rivas, and he can tell you what to do next.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Only because you're a good man.
Our next item is item number 3, Rezone Case Number 2017-6, to rezone from a C3 to an I3 to amend the LUP from Light Industrial to Heavy Industrial to allow for scrap metal recycling at 6801 Highway 70. Is the applicant here?
Chairman, my name is Sam Hilber, and I'm attorney, representing the applicant. And I'm here, if you'll recall, you rezoned some property just immediately east of this property, a little over 6 acres, and this property is immediately adjacent and west of the same property. And it's about 3 acres, and we're just asking for a favorable vote on the rezoning. And I would be glad to try to answer any questions, if the commission has any.
Okay. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments made, the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Banks.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Rivas, and he can tell you where to go next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the vote.
Thank you. Item number 4 is Rezone Case Number 2017-7, to rezone from C3 to I1 to amend the LUP from Community Shopping to Light Industrial to allow for truck parking at 11801 I40. Okay, is, yes, okay. You are representing Love's Country Store?
Yes, I'm Patna Getrick. I'm the engineer for Love's Country Store.
Okay. This application was in reference to a site plan review earlier on our agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application?
I don't know how they get his meter.
Any comments made, any of the commissioners, on this application?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Banks?
Now, how many parking spots are you looking at adding?
Approximately 50. We're trying to work with the Highway Department. They're redoing that whole inter... Well, the off-ramps there and widening it to reduce the congestion that has been caused over the years in that whole area. And by putting these in, we'll pull a lot of trucks off of that, that sometime illegally park on the ramp.
Been parking off the ramp. Now, Love's has quite a few parking spots existing. Is that correct, or...?
Well, the existing ones, all those will be changed over to just cars, RVs, no trucks. We're trying to move all the trucks to the back to pull them away from that, well, the intersection there.
Okay, okay. That's good.
Okay. Any other comments made, the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Banks.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. Get with Mr. Rivas, and he can tell you where to go next.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our public comment. Anyone have a public comment they'd like to make? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Baxter. I certainly did not. I usually welcome our alderman, but welcome you to our meeting and glad you came. Thank you. Steve Baxter, Alderman Ward 3. Question's been asked on the DeWoffel Baker application. Did that take, the plat that we reviewed, did that take care of the replat and everything?
Yes.
Okay, good. Everything was included?
All included in the same write-up.
Good deal. All right. All right. Any other comments?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We move... We adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.